Meschida, Senator Mabini, Senator Duñez, Senator Palacios, Senator Guthard, Senator Rispicio, Senator Ada. And joining us, thank you very much, Senator, Senator Rodriguez. I know there are others I saw somewhere roaming around. Senator Tyron, welcome. The legislature is back in session on the second reading. Everyone, I hope everyone has a copy of the amended agenda. And let me see, they were, they just recently gave it to you this afternoon. And the first bill that we have that with a committee report and ready to go would be substitute bill number 62. And I recognize the author, Senator Palacios, on 62.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 62, that's 31, a substitute of the committee on utilities, transportation, public works, and valet transfers be accepted.
It's already accepted, so now just to move it down to third.
So I, I move that Bill 62 to be moved to the, to reading file for, for purpose of discussion.
You may press.
If I may make a presentation.
Yes, please.
Madam Speaker, the real purpose of Bill 62 is actually to address the hazards and safety issue with respect to road construction out in the streets and especially on our main roads. And so it has become a common sight, you know, road, roadways being dug up and then it took months to restore. And even after it's been restored, maybe the restoration is not to the original condition before the, the digging up. And a few months after restoration, sometimes this again deteriorate, sometimes in six months. And all these things are actually being addressed. Currently, there's no deposit required to dig up parts of the roadway, for example, to connect a sewer line or to run a water line. And one just go get the permit, this is the private contractors building houses and apartments and, and other things. I guess a vivid example is the one in Mangillo. And that's not the only place, but that's been there as far as I can remember, Madam Speaker, I think 10 months now. And so there's no incentive actually to expedite the restoration of this temporary, I guess, dug up and, or the roadways. And there's no penalty for poor restoration after all this is being restored. And of course, there's no deposit made for this. So there's no way public works can go back to the contractor and penalize that. Or, and while it can go ahead and force the contractor to go and address the issue and make further repair, a lot of times, more often than not, Madam Speaker, that does not follow through. So this bill proposes to require a reasonable deposit of $500 or 5% of the value of the project, which is greater, of course, and before permitting takes place. And this is strictly just for security deposit. I think the permit itself has a fee, but there's no deposit for, for the, to ensure the proper restoration of the roadway. The, and this bill proposes to hold that deposit to one year. Why? Because it has been the experience in the past that sometimes, sometimes the quality of work is, is not really visible, that it's a poor quality until maybe past three months, four months, definitely within the year. So public works input is that based, based on their experience, one year would be sufficient. And if the repair work again fall into a lower standard, after one year, I think that, to them, that's acceptable at this time, but definitely there's no timeline right now. And the, the bill provides, of course, for the emergency digging by public works, even though, of course, they would be required that as soon as practical, they would have to go and get a permit later on. And so there is, of course, an exception or provision here to address emergency digging so that, you know, property, a damage to property can be minimized or prevented or even loss of life. And so this is what bill does not apply, this bill does not apply to government funded projects and other projects requiring, requiring, of course, insurance bonding. Because insurance bonding has its own built in surety for, for, just to make sure, of course, that the project is completed in time and the damages have been restored. So this is just for the simple permitting to dig up and connect, I guess, a sewer line and then put it back and patch it up and then it's gone. This bill actually addresses that, but with additional input and review by public works. And by the way, there was about, there were about three meetings back and forth with public works, myself and my staff going up and discussing this. They, they did a very good input here. And even the, the contractors association and those who were involved supported this, they don't mind the, I guess, the 12 month holding of deposits before release. Madam Speaker, more roadworks, as we know, will continue, of course, to take place as Guam grows and even more so, Bill 62 would become necessary. And I ask, of course, for the support of my colleagues. With that, I, I ended my presentation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize Senator Frank Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, while I stand and rise in support of, of the, the measure by the good gentleman from San Pago, there are some concerns with regards to, I guess, some of the mechanisms involved in, in, in basically ensuring that this, this occurs. And while one of my concerns was with regards to the amount of time it was necessary for the, the fee itself to be held in abeyance by the Department of Public Works to ensure that the, the repair of the roadway that had to have been excavated to be able to do that work was, was done properly. Concern that I have, and maybe what I'll do, ma'am, is I'll go ahead and I'll voice my concerns with regards to this and hoping that the good author can yield to some of the, to the questions that I may have. And one of the concerns that I have here is with regards to, once the repair work is done per se, the, the bill does not address as to what, by what standards this repair work is going to be done or by, or who is going to conduct the inspection, that, you know, the proper inspection necessary to ensure that this, this was done properly and in accordance with, with, with the standards for, for, for that roadway. Secondly, with regards to the emergency excavation, the bill recognizes that there are going to be a point in time when there's going to need to be an excavation because of emergency and that, you know, there's somewhat of a waiver of, of the application process. It does not address as to who the contractor has to go to to be able to basically ascertain or to provide the justification for the emergency excavation. I can just foresee that in, in some cases, there, there is a plethora of instances or, you know, reasons as to why a contractor would say this is an emergency excavation, so therefore they didn't have to go through this process. I think that it's incumbent upon us before we move on this thing is maybe, again, bring these concerns to the floor and then hopefully the, the author would yield to these questions so that we can tighten up the legislation here.
Would you like the author to yield to the question?
And if he can, and with regards to the, the concerns that I have.
Senator Palacios, do you yield to the question? There are two questions, so maybe Senator Blas, if you can start with the first one. The first one was when the work is complete, completed, who will be doing the inspections?
Who, who will conduct the, the inspection and by what standards going to be utilized to be able to ensure that this, the restoration of this, of the roadwork of this roadway that was excavated conforms to, to standards?
Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on page four, beginning of actually on line, somewhere in line three, that paragraph, it actually says here that the Department of Public, that the Department, which is Public Works conducts a site inspection of the road or highway project area and with the opening or excavation at occur and can ascertain that the repairs were conducted and completed properly in accordance with, with applicable statutes. Currently, Madam Speaker, they are doing that now. The reason why this is in this bill is that this bill is to require the permitting and the deposit for projects that do not require bonding or insurance. Like I said, maybe a simple project, just to get a permit to connect the sewer line, which is only about maybe 50 feet from, from a residence. Those kind of projects actually do not require deposit. And so with this bill, it, it, it won't address that, but for a larger project, it is already, I guess, in place that even before the project is awarded out, it's already all built in into that. We, they are doing that now. So public works is the one, now by what standard, I would think that they already have a standard now for the, for the projects that are bonded or insured. And so I would think that they have the standard. I mean, that, that's my assumption, Madam Speaker.
Senator Blas, was he able to answer your question?
In part, Madam Speaker, because Madam Speaker, my concern is, and recognizing the fee is $500 or 5% of the, of the project, whichever is greater, there may be instances, Madam Speaker, where the, if it's just a $500 fee, but the cost for the repair, for the proper repair may be in excess of that. Then what happens there? I mean, obviously, it's going to be insufficient. There's no grounds in as far as being able to recoup the actual cost necessary to be able to repair that roadway. Contractor would just walk away and not have, you know, just pay the $500, although it may cost the government $1,200 to fix. So what then? I mean, that's the concern, that's the other, at to what standard? And if the standard isn't met and the standard exceeds the amounts necessary for the fee, then what happens?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
That's a good point. Of course, it says here that $500 or 5% of the project, but if the project is only cost $10,000 and, of course, and if the repair is going to cost more than that, then there's a problem there. But that is the, I guess, the, from the experience of public works, that's, that is the figure that they arrive at. I understand that this has actually been worked on by publics work after the public hearing, going back and forth, and their engineering were involved, drawing upon their past experience and so forth. So that's my best explanation at this point, Madam Speaker.
Senator Blas, you do have a second question?
And I do have a second question. I think that, but going back to the first question, and I recognize in as far as the concern and how that was derived, and, and maybe it'd be necessary in the future, should this pass into, into law, that, that, I guess, we'll base it on experience with regards to whether or not this, this, this is a proper assessment of the fee. Because I just don't want to get into a situation where, you know, the excavation, again, you know, the cost for the, for, for the repair work is, is more than the deposit fee and the contractor just walks away and really have no recourse. My concern is, right now, because of this, I don't know we have any legal recourse to go after the contractor if it's, if it costs any more than that. That's something that, it, again, I don't want it to go against the bill. I like the bill. I, I just want to see if we can tighten that up. The second area is with regards to the emergency excavation, is it, although it basically provides for a, again, a, a process prior to the issuance of the permit or, or deposit, my concern is who provides that certification that it is an emergency excavation?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, for that part, Madam Speaker, again, there's already established a process by which, of course, people apply. And that provision of this bill is essentially allowing for an emergency to proceed, let the work proceed, but the individual performing, or the company performing emergency project, it still has to go and get a permit to begin with. So the emergency provision is just allow the work to perform without first getting a permit. And, and it requires a justification. Of course, an explanation, if you read the, it's right here, that the, the, except for prior permit, none of the, well, let me see, "An emergency evacuation may be made without prior permit or deposit if the reason for the excavation is to prevent loss of life or damage to property." That appears to be imminent if the excavation is delayed. So probably that will be the basis is, can this not wait? And if it cannot wait because it, it might search circuit and involve in explosion of things like, I, you know, those things, or there is an underground and, I guess, hollow of the ground and then, anything that can be related to that, I would say that that is an emergency. But then it remains, of course, to be seen at, at that point. But it, it, it has to relate to prevention of loss of life or damage to property. And it, it, it can come later and probably attached to the application of the permit, which would, I think, according to the discussion with us, it should happen within, within 48 hours. You know, you do the emergency, but simultaneously, the following morning, daybreak, somebody has to be already processing the application.
Senator, are you?
No.
You still have the floor.
It, it, it's still basically, I, I'm concerned, a little concerned as to who provides that emergency, that certification for the emergency excavation. Something I probably can talk to the author with, offline with regards to this. That said, Madam Speaker, I, I guess, then along those lines with the emergency excavation, on page five, starting in line 13, basically where it's, where after it has been deemed that the excavation was not emerged, the applicant shall be penalized $500 for failing to properly secure permit prior to excavating. I, I think we want to make sure, and if this is the intent of the author, we want to make sure that this $500 penalty is inclusive and that the, is on top of the required $500 necessary for the permit. So if you read this language, it basically states that if there, if the permit was done or the excavation was done without the permit, there's a $500 penalty. But is that just the penalty and not the processing of permit fee? Or, or do we have intent of, it's $500 penalty plus then you have to, you have to pay for the, the permit? And maybe that's my third question, if the author could yield to that.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, I, I do not know the, the fee for permits right now. It's already established. The $500 deposit is actually a deposit to ensure the, the acceptable restoration of the, the roadways after it's been repaired. Now, these other $500 for, for a fine as a penalty, I would think that they are separate from the deposit. The deposit, if at the onset is deposit, but of course, it's an emergency, you don't have time to deposit, but maybe at that point, they would be required to deposit, just like regular processing, which is returnable, refundable upon the completion of the project with the road, roadways returned to, I guess, satisfactory condition. Now, if the applicant is not justified, then it depends on, on why the emergency project took place in the first place. And the $500 penalty is actually associated with the fact that the work commenced without a permit and according to public works, this could have been done tomorrow or the following day because in their determination it's not emergency. Again, what is emergency is that the prevention of life, loss of life or damage to property. I think that would be the overriding consideration. But of course, maybe we can add some language here, maybe warning or give in, what, give in one day to remedy the, the inadequacies of, something like that, I can agree with that.
Madam Speaker, I don't have a problem with it as far as the, the imposition of the penalty. My concern is that with the imposition of the penalty, does that, because this was done in haste, does that negate the individual from the contractor from actually having to pay the proper permit fees, pay the proper deposit fees? This is the penalty. Now, on top of that, my, my assumption here is that this penalty is in addition to what should have been paid properly.
Yes.
Had this process go through. So, but the way the language reads here is that they can do the emergency excavation, not get the permit, get the $500 penalty and not be, and not have to worry about paying the permit fee or the $500 deposit to ensure that it occurs. Again, this was, because you tried to circumvent the system and you tried to do this illegally, I can understand the penalty. But this should not negate or preclude the individual from having to pay the proper fees. And that's my concern.
Yeah. Well, I share the observation, of course, of the gentleman.
Would you like a brief recess?
Well, Madam Speaker, in the interest of time and everything, maybe this is something that I can work with, with a good author on. And if you can, if the rules can, can allow, we can come back to this.
Maybe just, if I may speak, Madam Speaker, maybe just an amendment now that, to differentiate that this penalty is in addition to other fees that-
That's fine.
-which is the permitting fees and the deposit fees that are already required. Maybe just that, that it is an addition. It is an addition to other fees established for permitting and for deposits.
And that's fine.
Because I agree with him that you can circumvent this and just say, everything would be emergency, just penalize me $500 and I'll be fine. I don't have to deposit.
Thank you very much, Senator, for that clarification. On the motion, I recognize Speaker Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly support what is being attempted here. One of the first things I did when the new director was named to the Department of Public Works was I sent her a letter, most especially and on point with this excavation on GovGuam roads. I started seeing and noticing more contractors getting a permit, digging up the road, leaving it open, and then putting in these steel plates that are two, four inches above the current grade of the road that just wreck havoc on consumers' cars. They wreck havoc on the tires, on the alignment, and it just costs the people money, plus it presents a safety hazard to the traveling public. So I wrote to her and I said, "You gotta do something about these things, that these contractors can't just dig up the road and put this thing in place and leave them there until they're good and ready." It just doesn't make sense. So we've got to put in a policy to, to resolve this matter. And so we got, I got some action. I got a nice letter, oh, we're gonna fix it. And then a couple of the areas that I specifically pointed out had them filled in. But no more than a week later, 20 feet up the road, they dug the entire road again and it's still there now. I think rather than putting fines and so forth, I think we should just set timelines that every applicant who comes in and says they're gonna dig up a road, estimate to DPW that it's gonna take us four days to complete our connection, or whatever they're going to do on the road, or bury a pipe. And if they don't complete it in four days, they restore that road back to its original condition with the original specs. And if, if they're not finished, it doesn't matter. We shouldn't be in the business of making it easy for them to wreck our lives and endanger our traveling public. We should say, you, with your engineers, say, "I'm gonna dig up this road." They should first have all of the permits in place. If they need GWA for a water connection, they have a GWA permit. They go up there, they map out the infrastructure, they know where the stub outs are, and then they dig up the road, and then they know that it's gonna take them 10 days to finish the connections, test it out, and so forth. If they don't complete it in 10 days, cover it back up and come back when you're ready to complete the project. Or if they find out that that's not where the infrastructure is, put it back and go find where the correct site is. But to just let them go, I mean, the, the repair right in front of the entrance to St. Paul's, I wrote her about that. I said, "That's been there for like five years. Five years." And they, you know what? We're trying to save the contractor money by letting him put those steel plates on 'cause it, it's cost less money to put the steel plates on rather than restoring the road and then coming back five years later and digging it back up. I think that's what they should have done. They should have restored the road and then they're not ready to fix it, come back when they are, dig it back up, put your schedule in place, and if you don't mean it, bury it again, put it back to its original specifications, and come back when you're ready, instead of putting in these plates and having us wait forever. There's one right out here in Marine Drive. There's a depression right in front of Wendy's in Agania for that brand new road, even though they haven't finished the top coat, but the travel, travel coat is finished. But that's a brand new road that's been there and it hasn't been fixed. And I don't know how many letters I wrote to DPW, I'm saying, "Hey, get your contractor back." This is a brand new road that now there's like a eight inch depression over a five foot area that people swerve to avoid. Why are we letting these contractors get away with it? DPW just say, "Come back here, fill this back up. If you think you got something else to dig up, when you're good and ready, dig it back up." But right now, the traveling public deserves safe roads where it doesn't wreck havoc on our cars. So maybe I just want to kind of work on an amendment that just says that, that every application shall have a timeframe, and when they're not done in that timeframe, that they dig it, that they restore it and come back when they're ready to repair the road again, or whatever they're repairing underneath. That's what it's gonna take, and that's what this, the traveling public deserves. You know, because they leave these things forever and it, because it's cheaper for them and we're letting them get away with it. And I don't think, I think the contractor is gonna make sure that the next time he puts in an application and he says it's gonna take him 10 days, he's gonna do it in five because he doesn't want to risk having to cover it back up and then come back and dig it again. So they're gonna do it right the first time because it's gonna cost them more money to not do it right the first time and come back. If all they do is put a plate on, it takes $25 to take off that edge that they put on of asphalt, pull up the plate, and they got a hole right there. Meantime, I've got to realign my car twice. I've got to swerve and almost run into somebody four times because I don't want to run over that plate. I admit, when I go down at night, I can close my eyes, swerve, and miss that damn thing, that, that thing by swerving into the middle lane 'cause I know exactly where it's at. And I do that 'cause I don't want to wreck my car, but it's dangerous to do that. We're not supposed to be doing that. But I do it because it wrecks my tires, it wrecks my alignment, and it costs me money while the contractor's sitting there saving money at my expense, at your expense. And I say, "We just gotta tell him to stop. Do it right. Do it right the first time and we'll be happy to work with you in terms of giving you the permits and expediting all of that. But don't not do the job. Put a repair, patchwork repair that endangers the public's safety and wrecks the public's vehicles and get away with it." So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to just make some kind of amendment here, maybe, and while the others are speaking, that'll put that in place, that every application shall have a timeline. That then if they're not able to meet that timeline, they restore the road to the specifications from which, when they dug it up, put it back in the condition that ensures public safety and public convenience. And then when you're ready to fix it, come back and fix it because you finally got your act together, dig it back up. You know, dig it back up. Don't let us pay for the inefficiencies. And if it's because some department or agency doesn't know where their water line is or where their power line is or where their cable line is, then don't dig up the road until you know. And when you dig it up and it's not there, that's why, Madam Speaker, one of the things I- I put in place in statute that was passed by this body is that, when these utilities and companies go out there and place things in our right-of-ways or in our roads, that in addition to the specifications and the drawings they put in place to receive their permit, that at the end of the job, if they've changed anything in their mapping, that they file what they call ASBILT drawings. So that if they said, "We're gonna put this thing in this position," and they go back there, and they dig it up, and they find out they can't put it there 'cause of some reason, and they move it 10 inches up the road, that then when they finish that project, they file a new map at DPW that says, "Here's the ASBILT of that. We moved it 10 inches up." So that the next guy that's gonna come and dig in that area knows that what they have there is the ASBILT drawings, that it is not where it was originally applied for, that it's in the ASBILT drawings that moved it 10 inches, so now they know where to dig. And we have that law in place, and I'm hoping that it's being enforced by GPA, by GWA, by the cable companies, by DPW, requiring these companies to file this ASBILT drawing, so we don't end up having to dig here and then dig there, looking for something. We know exactly where we put it on, and when field conditions change where we put it, then we tell everyone else that's gonna come behind them to dig in that area, exactly what the field conditions are and what changes were made. And so we're trying to fix these kind of things incrementally by some of the policies we're putting in place, and that was one of the pieces of legislation that this body enacted, which I'd sponsored, and I think it's a good thing. And so now, on this kind of thing, I just think, you know, these contractors should know what their obligations are, should know where these things are, and when you can't complete the job in the application timeline that you asked for, then don't put that plate there and leave it there for 10, 20, 40 days, 180 days, five years, while I have to continually swerve, risk the public's safety, realign my car, buy new tires, all within that five years, just so you can save the cost of digging up that area when you're good and ready to repair what's wrong in the original place. And so, Madam Speaker, it's, I don't mind when they put the plates and then they come back the next day and work, but they put the plates and they leave for months at a time. Because I know, at least, when they put the plates on and they come back and work, that they're trying to finish it. But, Madam Speaker, that Chalampago site, they haven't been back, and for whatever reason why those steel plates are there, they shouldn't be there. That road should be restored, put back in the original specification, until they're now good and ready for whatever they found out there that said that they couldn't make that repair immediately, put it back. And so if we put this in place now, we know then that these companies will be more careful, will file their applications, DPW will review them and give them what's reasonable. We're gonna be hiring an engineer that we've authorized them to hire under federal highways, so that we now will have somebody out there that can look at these things, repair, and determine that, yes, it's reasonable to expect something like this to be done in 20 days or 60 days. Eight months, totally unreasonable. You can't have a permit to dig it up and leave a hole open with a plate on there for six months. It just is not reasonable. We're not gonna approve that permit. We have an engineer that we've authorized DPW to hire, and he can make that determination. So, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate what's being proposed here. I just think that, as some of the arguments are made, yeah, it's cheaper to pay the $500 fine and not come back and restore it, or leave the thing open, but when you're telling them, "You gotta restore that road to the specifications of what you dug up," then I think they're gonna think twice about being more efficient themselves, rather than complaining that the government doesn't know what it's doing. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and I hope to write something real quick on this for consideration by the body.
Are there any other speakers? So we're gonna go and take a brief recess.
We're back on. While Speaker Ben is preparing his amendment, I understand that the minority leader has a proposal that doesn't require us cutting down a tree.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, this is after discussions with the author, and the concern with regards to imposing the imposition of the penalty. In the case of the emergency excavation and not meeting those requirements, my concern was, other than the imposition of the penalty, it didn't appear that the contractor would be liable for the proper fees, you know, and the deposits necessary to make that full. So, along those lines, and thank you for understanding, I don't think it was necessary for us to cut down a tree just for the amendment here, and I'll turn it over to the clerk after we're done, is, the amendment will be on line 15, page 5 of the bill, and it is basically, after the word "excavating," remove the period there and insert the words, "and still required to pay the appropriate fees and deposits."
Did everybody get that?
So, if you want me, Mr. Speaker, I'll go ahead and read the statement here. "In the event the department deems that the excavation was not an emergency, the applicant shall be penalized $500 for failure to properly secure permit prior to excavating and still required to pay the appropriate fees and deposits."
Does everybody understand that amendment proposed? Anybody wish to be heard on the amendment proposed by Senator Blos? Any objection to the amendment being proffered by the senator from Barigata? I see the main author of the bill has no objection. There being no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I believe we'll need to take another recess. Amendment being proffered by Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the amendment that I'm proposing for consideration by the body would read, beginning at the first paragraph in section 53105, would read, "All applications for excavation of a roadway shall have a schedule of work that sets the timeline and the maximum time before the road is restored to the original condition or better. The contractor shall be required to close the opening and restore the road upon expiration of the time as specified by the permit or DPW chief engineer. One extension for less time than allotted by the original work schedule may be granted by the chief engineer for good reason." So we're not totally being inflexible here. We're recognizing that there may be unexpected circumstances that may not, may prevent the contractor from completing the job on time. And so, in this case, we're giving some authority to the chief engineer to review that application for an extension and grant an additional extension. Otherwise, I think they should just cover it back up, put it back in its original condition, and when they're ready to come back and finish the work, they just dig it back up. That's just what we deserve, in terms of the quality of work that should be done on our roadways, and that when we, you know, damage those roadways, that we put them back as soon as possible, we hold the contractors accountable for their professionalism and their expertise in the work that they do, and have them put the roadways back in place as soon as possible. And this amendment to the additional language proposed in the bill, I think will do that and will assist in implementing the original intent of the bill, which is to put these roadways back to the condition that will allow the convenience and the safety of the traveling public and accomplish that. So that's my proposal, Mr. Speaker, and I'm asking the body for their consideration.
Has everybody received a copy of the proposed amendment? Does any senator wish to be heard on the proposed Pangolinan amendment? Is there an objection to the Pangolinan amendment? Is there an objection to the Pangolinan amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not gonna express an objection, it's just I wanna make sure that there's no ambiguity in as far as the language here. And it's basically in the last sentence, and if I can have the author yield to this, it says, "One extension for the less time, for less time than allotted by the original work." I recognize that maybe what, does this mean that we can ask, or was the intent to allow the contractor or the company to basically go in and ask for an extension, but not for not more than the original time allotted? Let's say, they said initially they were gonna do it for two weeks. If they're gonna go for an extension, they can go for an extension, but not for more than two weeks. Is that what the intent is?
Senator Pangolinan, did you wish to yield?
I think that's not only the intent, but the language.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Tom Etta.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I understand what the mover of the amendment is trying to achieve. The concern that I have is that this assumes that we know what's underneath that roadway that's gonna be dug up. And a good example is the Tri-Intersection project. They had timelines of when they thought that we're gonna be able to dig things up and then be able to finish the project, but as they went along, they found that, in fact, where they did not expect to find utilities, they found utilities at a depth that was shallower than what was originally the information that was given to them. They came across an old fuel tank that was in the ground, which, back then, the Environmental Protection Agency said, "Okay, fine, if it's not gonna be used, just fill it up with cement, plug it up, and off you go." When they came upon that, EPA said, "Nope, you gotta dig that thing up." And so, of course, that extended thing. So I think the Tri-Intersection is a good example of, we just don't always know what's underneath. So for a contractor to go out there and dig and say, "Oh yeah, I can get this thing done within 48 hours," that assumes that we actually, that, you know, all the information that he got from Guam Water Works, that you're not gonna find any lines down there, from GPA, from whoever, the ASBILTS are not always as accurate. So I do have some concerns with this, that then, so, you know, I think the first part is good from the standpoint that then the contractor uses his best guess estimate and tries to gather all the information, but then, and he goes out there and he does the work, and then he comes into all these unknowns. Then to be able to be given an extension for less than the allotted time, that may, that I think may be a problem, because then, when we actually dig up and we find, we actually don't know what's down there, we may find that a project which we originally said was gonna take 72 hours may probably take a little bit longer, because now, in the case of a gas, you know, you find some fuel line or something, now we have to call an EPA, EPA has to do their thing, and then you get other players involved who are not just necessarily standing around waiting to be activated. And so I do have some concerns with the, with the last sentence there, that "one extension for less time than allotted by the original work schedule may be granted by the chief engineer for good reason." And I would like to suggest that maybe that part should be amended to read, "One extension may be granted by the chief engineer for good reason." And if that extension requires, you know, we have to get with EPA, "How soon can you get your guy out there?" And if it requires three, four times the original time allotted, then that's what it should be, but we probably should leave that to the chief, the department's chief engineer to determine what would be a reasonable time. So I would like to make an amendment to this amendment by simply deleting on that last sentence, such that it reads, "One extension may be granted by the department's chief engineer for good reason."
Thank you, Senator Etta. So, the Etta amendment is to strike for less time than allotted by the original work schedule. Who wishes to be heard on that? Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I don't rise to oppose the amendment, but, you know, I just think that, I mean, we went from using the Tri- we went from using the Tri-Intersection as an example to a 72-hour permit. And so, if the Tri-Intersection, the original schedule was for, I don't know, 395 days. And so, to say that we should now allow an extension for longer than 395 days doesn't make sense. I mean, you can't have done half the work, found something that will now require you to do, mitigate that, that's longer than it took you to do the entire project. So, that's why I said for not longer than the original. So, it could be... And so, you know, that's the issue I look at. And so, but I do understand the example you used, that if you go out there and EPA needs to come out and clear it, they may not be available. That... And I appreciate that, and that's why I'm not rising in opposition to the amendment. But I also think that, you know, we've got to hold our own people to a standard. I mean, you know, if we're now going to allow all these things because we can't perform, then, you know, then we've got to revamp ourselves. And I certainly, again, I'm not opposing the amendment, but I just think that, you know, the examples used just didn't fit. So, that's all. I support the amendment. I have no objection to it.
Any other senator wish to be heard on the Etta amendment to the Pangolinan amendment? Senator Silva? No, okay. Is there an objection to the Etta amendment? Hearing none. On the main Pangolinan amendment, is there an objection as amended by the Etta amendment? Anybody wish to speak on the main amendment as amended? Hearing none. Senator Espisha, do you wish to be heard on the bill? I have your name, the speaker left it on the list. Anybody else wish to be heard on Bill 62? Senator Palacios, do you wish to close?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make one simple amendment before I close and move this to the reading file on Page 4, Line 15, Page 4, Line 15. After the word highway, if you can just strike that phrase to its original condition prior to the project.
Mr. Speaker? Is he making closing remarks now? I'm sorry, I wanted to speak on the bill.
Oh, no, no, Mr. Speaker, okay. Okay. Senator Etta, then, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm in support of the bill, of course, but I would like to, on Page 4, propose an amendment. On Line 3 there, it stipulates that the deposit fee that we're talking about here shall be retained by the department for one year from the completion of the road repair. So, I complete the road repair today, DPW has to hold that deposit for one year. And until such time that the department conducts a site inspection of the road or highway project. I would like to proffer an amendment on Line 4 there to read, "The deposit fee highlighted here shall be retained by the department for up to one year." So, in other words, the department could go out there next month after the project is completed, and if everybody's satisfied that conditions have been restored to their original condition or better, then give back the deposit to the contractor. But as written right now, the department would not be able to do that. They would have to hold on to that money for one year. And then, so they have to hold it for up to one year, but probably the other condition there on Line 5, it says, "And until such time that the department conducts a site inspection." So, let's say that the department then, for some reason, is backlog and does not get out there until, you know, well after 12 months. So, then, even after the one year lapses, then the department, then the, you know, then that condition hasn't been met, and so, really, the deposit cannot be returned. So, I would like to offer the amendment on Line 4, that it would read, "Department for up to one year from the completion..."
Let's take them one by one, please.
Okay, well, this is a real easy one, actually, if you just...
Okay.
And so, it would read, "Department for up to one year from the completion of the road repair or until such time that the department conducts a site inspection." So, the two triggers then is... I was going to change the word on Line 5, "and," but then, as I... Yeah, I think we need to change that word "and" to "or." They can hold it for up to one year or until such time that the department conducts a site inspection.
Does everybody understand the Etta amendment? It's... There are two separate ones. One is up to one year and strike "and" on Line 5 in place, "or until such time as the department conducts a site inspection and has ascertained that the repairs..."
No, 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 no.
Yes?
No, so, they can hold it for up to one year, and if an inspection is conducted within the one year, then the department can release it. But if the department has not come in to do that inspection within the year, then that thing cannot be released. Maybe I need... Maybe we need to look at this, but...
Well, let's take a short break.
Okay.
Sessions, Senator Etta, you still have the floor?
Madam Speaker, I'm going to withdraw that amendment.
Okay, so, without any objections? So, order. Clerks, you were able to get that? So, everything will stay as is. Senator Palacios to close, yes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I move for the... Making a motion to... I'd like to make an amendment, again, on Page 4, Line 15. After the word highway, strike out the phrase to its original condition prior to the project. And that's because if you read Line 14, should the area repaired meet the department's standards set for the repair of the road or highway, then the department shall return the deposit. So, there it is. As long as the department's standard, whatever that was set, that will be sufficient, and that's upon the guidance of the legal counsel, which makes sense. That's the amendment.
And the amendment, which is on Page 4, Line 15 and 16, after the word highway, to delete to its original condition prior to the project, comma. Any objections? No objections, so order. You still have the floor, Senator?
And thank you very much for those input, especially with respect to setting a timeline by which, of course, the road project has to be completed or... And then allowing for extension. With that addition, it's just strengthening the bill, and I asked my colleagues to support this. And I move that it be placed in the third reading file for voting, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
On the motion to send Bill Number 62-31 to the third reading file without any objections, We are now on Resolution Number 74 LS. I recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and Talawani Sizus, good afternoon. I'd like to move Resolution Number 74-31 COR is introduced by myself and Senator Guthertz to the third reading. And can I speak on it?
Yes, you may continue.
Thank you, Sizus Massey. Madam Speaker, this bill resolution... I mean, this Resolution Number 74-31 COR is relative to voicing the Guam Legislature's vehement support for the full implementation of Public Law 110-229 and requesting that the U.S. Secretary of Homeland Security, the Honorable Janet Napolitano, provide for the issuance of a China-Russia visa waiver program through her parole authority and the issuance of a broader final rule for the Marianas visa waiver program. Madam Speaker, this resolution was introduced on April 12th, and, as you know, April 12th of 2011, and it's now almost going to... We're at the end of the August month, and we still haven't heard of, from the U.S. Secretary from Homeland Security. But the intent of Resolution 74, Madam Speaker, that it acknowledges that while the federal family has almost had three years to implement this clearly stated congressional intent of Public Law 1110-229, hope has given way to frustration, causing some to believe that this delay is the equivalent to, of denial. As you know, Madam Speaker, unfortunately, with the age of the Japanese population and the... Combined with the recent natural disasters and economic uncertainty, has resulted in less outbound travels to Guam from the Japan market. During its peak period in the 1990s, Guam's share of outbound Japanese market reached approximately 6%. Today, Madam Speaker, our share of the same market has declined to about 4%, representing a nearly negative 33% decline in market strength to grow. Guam must be given the opportunity to expand fully, tapping the economic potential of emerging markets in the China and Russia waiver, as we were allowed to do with Japan in the late 1980s. And I know that you, Madam Chair, and some of our colleagues were here when that Japan visa waiver program was afforded to Guam. Madam Speaker, without the full implementation of this Public Law 110-229 or the issuance of the same parole authority already granted to our neighboring island Saipan, the singular nature of our tourism economy ties Guam's economic well-being to the fate of one nation. The provisions that created the Marianas visa waiver program were intended to provide for the economic development, not the economic disparity, and yet Guam must deal with the harm from that disparity today. And while Chinese visitors make up only 10% of Saipan's tourism base, these visitors spend 50% more than their Japanese counterparts, resulting in an additional $38 million to the CNMI's economy. And at a time when the insular governments are being asked to decrease our dependence on federal dollars, the full implementation of a China-Russia visa waiver program for Guam is both economically imperative and well timed. The same economic conditions that resulted in the use of the Significant Economic Benefit Provision for the CNMI now also exist on Guam. You know, Madam Speaker, our on seizing call for the full implementation of this China-Russia visa waiver program for Guam is also in line with the Travel Promotion Act of 2009, and that was the United States Administration's call for increased tourism to the United States and a desire to reduce our nation's trade deficit with China. And I'd like to note that though delays surrounding the implementation of congressional intent can be occasionally frustrating and disheartening, we know that executive branch agencies must be extremely diligent amid these tenuous times. Yet, in the course of the last three years, I want you to know, Madam Speaker, that Guam has been visited by several China-based charter flights, bringing a total of 4,200 Chinese citizens to Guam without a single overstay or asylum concern. And as you and my colleagues know, that was one of the major concerns of why the authority wasn't granted to Guam. It is my hope, Madam Speaker, that with the help of this resolution to Congress and the administration fully implementing the mandates of Public Law 110-229, doing so will inspire a new era of prosperity for Guam's people and earn us the thanks of future generations. And I say that sincerely, Madam Speaker. As you know, that Guam's tourism industry is literally responsible for 20,000 jobs, and that's about 60% of our economic base. And you and I also know, Madam Speaker, that as we look at where we have most of our eggs marketing with Japan, and I know that our Japanese tour market has been Guam's number one driver in this effort, we know that with the recent downturn, it has really shown a decline in our market here in Guam. And as we look at new resources coming in, as we look at enticing a more economic base of outbound travelers to visit our beautiful tropical paradise, I think it's important that we all unite together and ask the United States to share and give us that same authority and help us move forward in their efforts to promote outbound travelers in the United States. As you and I know, Madam Speaker, that we are America in Asia, and we should be afforded those same opportunities. And if it is of financial... I mean, security concern, you and I know that, Madam Speaker and my colleagues, share that the security of our island has shown that Guam is very much secured. We have bases from north to south, and based on the tracking and the reporting of what is happening within our Pacific region, Guam is ready to accept our customs and border patrols. Our customs agent officers are very, very well trained, very well disciplined, and we know that Guam is ready to accept this issuance. And we look forward, and I'm hoping that my colleagues believe and support this effort as we look at receiving this China-Russia visa waiver program. So, I would like to offer the amendment on Line 4, that it would read, "Department for up to one year from the completion..."
Let's take them one by one, please.
Okay, well, this is a real easy one, actually, if you just...
Okay.
And so, it would read, "Department for up to one year from the completion of the road repair or until such time that the department conducts a site inspection." So, the two triggers then is... Change... I was going to change the word on Line 5, "and," but then, as I... Yeah, I think we need to change that word "and" to "or." They can hold it for up to one year or until such time that the department conducts a site inspection.
Does everybody understand the Etta amendment? It's... There are two separate ones. One is up to one year and strike "and" on Line 5 in place, "or until such time as the department conducts a site inspection and has ascertained that the repairs..."
No, 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 no.
Yes?
No, so, they can hold it for up to one year, and if an inspection is conducted
as we look at receiving this China-Russia visa waiver program for our island, as we look forward to promoting and bringing new resources, much more resources, that our beautiful island needs. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this Resolution 74-31. I know it's been several months, but I'm not giving up hope, Madam Speaker, and I'm hoping that my colleagues still believe that with this program being given, if they get, when they give it to us, that Guam will see a, see a better and brighter future for our children and for our communities. So thank you again for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I'd like to ask my colleagues to please help me support this effort and, and send this resolution to the United States Secretary of Homeland Security, Janet Napolitano, and continue to be strong and firm about wanting this authority for Guam. Sizus Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the, on the motion, Senator Duane, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to rise in full support of Resolution 74-31. I would like to thank our good colleague from Pago Bay for proffering such a, an important substantive resolution. As you may know, Madam Speaker, and members of the body, my very close friends, that I, I worked for 16 years in the tourism industry and, and enjoyed the sometimes good times and sometimes bad times. And I have to say that, you know, this is an opportunity to bring back some of the good times as we move forward and try everything we can in working with the governor's office and working with, with every official that we can talk to and whatever type of attention that we can gather for this issue, Madam Speaker, to, to push this issue forward. You know, Madam Speaker, as we just cut through discussing some very important measures within the fiscal budget for this year, you know, of course, there was discussion of, what are the numbers, possible shortfalls, you know, things that we're dealing with going forward. But, you know, and I know in the SES meetings, and, and there's a lot of discussion about economic development, and, and I think that was one component, and even yourself, Madam Speaker, had mentioned a number of times, that we need to keep talking about. It's not just the shortfalls and not just the, the issues that we face in terms of what this budget looks like, but all opportunities that we can move forward on and work together as a body to see if we can also bring in additional revenue, because it's not just about potential cuts and, yes, rightsizing, and there's a lot of issues that need to happen. But economic development is a huge, huge factor, and we all know the potential, you know, that this could bring. Madam Speaker, our good friends and brothers and sisters of the CNMI are already embarking upon this market. I've heard a number of times folks say that, you know, it's competitive. I don't believe that, Madam Speaker. I believe that as we move forward in terms of our regional collaboration, in terms of what we all need, the, the wonderful assets that exist within the CNMI, and, and of course, you know, Guam's diverse economy and, and are also our face of tourism, I think is a beautiful blend. And I think that we need to continue to work with our brothers and sisters through this resolution, you know, in, in the CNMI, to, to further these relationships so that we can all benefit from, from tourism and, and the wonderful things that it brings and the wonderful potential to our island. So, Madam Speaker, I, I just thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this resolution, and I once again thank the good author for being very vigilant. I believe this is the second substantive resolution that she's had with regard to inclusion and keeping a close and watchful eye on her oversight to ensure that nothing slips by, no opportunity slips by. And I certainly look forward to voting on this resolution and giving our, our island another opportunity to see what we can do about getting this much needed shot in the arm with regard to this tourism potential to bring in, you know, guests from China. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for this opportunity.
You're very welcome. Senator, on the motion, Senator Guthertz, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, this is something that we need to support. You're welcome. This is, of course, something that we have to support. It's nothing new to us because we've been advocating for this for a number of years, and Senator Barnes has been very aggressive in advocating for this, also with Senator Cruz. You know, I remember a few months ago, Governor Calvo, his most recent trip to Washington, met with representatives of the Department of Homeland Security, and he indicated that he had great difficulty even setting up an appointment to meet with a high level representative from that department, but he was finally able to do it, and he was happy that he was able to do it. And when he came back, he sort of indicated that they were showing more flexibility and more interest in our request. And that's been about, what, a month and a half, half since that visit occurred. But we haven't seen anything or heard anything yet from Washington, and I'm really worried about this, Madam Speaker. And then because of this, I've been looking around and trying to figure out what, what really is going on. And the reality is that we're pushing in this direction hard, but there are others that are pushing against it. And what we're up against is the military establishment, unfortunately. Representatives here from veterans groups are opposed to this, when they should be supportive of it. And then we're also facing some extreme rightists in Washington that are opposed to it inside the Department of Homeland Security and elsewhere within the federal government. And of course, we know what their concern is. They're afraid that if we have visitors from the People's Republic of China, that some of them may in fact be running around taking pictures of our fences and our bases and other assets for strategic military and intelligence purposes. Well, to be very honest with you, that's going on anyway. Not just here, but throughout the Western Pacific, that's going on. You know how easy it is for people to visit other places in the Western Pacific, whether it's our friends from the Republic of Bala or FSM, or even in CNMI or the Marshals. They have visitors from China all the time. They even have people from China opening businesses in their communities as part of the geopolitical strategy to make friends within island communities. I'm not afraid of this, because I think our intelligence community is strong enough to be able to act when it needs to act. But I think we need more face-to-face time with some of these Washington officials. The head of the Department of Homeland Security herself has never visited Guam. Never, never come here, Ms. Napolitano. And you know, we should invite her to come here. I think that would be a good move from this legislature to invite her to come to Guam, to see our island herself, to feel the island herself, to meet with our tourism industry, to visit the communities on Guam, to meet with our people, to see what it is here. And then she will learn that really the risks are minimal. And I would like to recommend, if I may, to my colleague, the sponsor of this resolution, if somehow we could fit that invitation in the resolution, inviting the head of the Department of Homeland Security to please come to Guam and visit the island and meet with our leaders and our tourism industry and our people, to get a personal understanding of the requests we have made. And I think that would make a big difference. If I may, I'd like to make that recommendation, Mr. Speaker, that we, we could allow legal counsel to fit that in the resolution, inviting Director of Homeland Security or Secretary of Homeland Security Janet Napolitano to come to Guam and visit the island and meet with our tourism industry and our leaders and our people, and to watch our tourism infrastructure in action here, how we handle our visitors, what they see and what they do here. That's a motion, Mr. Speaker.
On the Guthertz Amendment to amend the resolution to include a provision, to have legal counsel include a provision inviting the Secretary of Homeland Security to Guam. Anybody wish to be heard? Speaker Pangolinen.
I would just like to amend that, that we also authorize the governor to send her a round-trip ticket to come to Guam. No, I'm serious.
I don't object to that.
So that there's no excuse.
That's a good one. I like that.
On the Pangolinen Amendment to the Guthertz Amendment, if there are any objection? On the Guthertz Amendment as amended by Senator Pangolinen, any objection? Hearing or seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues.
Speaker Wampat, and then Senator Frank Boss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to, to speak on this resolution. As a matter of fact, I had received an invitation to go and testify, and somehow it didn't happen, but I had submitted a, a written testimony, and, and the, our Congresswoman, of course, had personally had requested that then it actually be a part of the, of their journal. In, in the testimony, Mr. Speaker, is that, that I started off basically saying is that the writing is, on the wall is very clear, that the United States government and the government of Guam must look towards developing other opportunities to maintain the budget levels in the public sector with jobs and also jobs in the private sector, and that anything less would result in a continued economic downward spiral. The one thing also that was important in this is to say that the Guam and CNMI visa waiver program is an excellent opportunity to test the market, you know, for Russia and China, their markets for future considerations in this visa waiver. You gave testimony also, and you actually provided excellent data about a program here, and this is also consistent with the U.S. Travel Association report that actually says that a plan such as this can actually create a 1.3 million U.S. jobs by welcoming international travelers. The question was, was asked of several individuals who were there to testify, and a representative of Homeland Security on behalf of Ms. Napolitano basically said that she would be making her, her decision based on two things. One would be the economy of the individual places, CNMI and Guam, and the other would be national security. Our Congresswoman, of course, pressed on and provided that information that a discussion had taken place, and the governor did this as well, that Admiral Bouchang, in his conversations with them, felt that, or feel that national security was not an issue, security was not an issue here on, on both ends of the island, so therefore hoping that the discussion will be narrowed down to the economy. A question was also asked of a, a member from the private sector from CNMI, and she had responded that, the question was that, do you see this possibly as a Guam being a competitor, and would this in any way affect then the number of tourist, Chinese and Russian tourists actually going to CNMI, I mean, not going to CNMI as much because now they want to come to Guam? And her response was that both of the islands, CNMI and Guam, actually offer, have their own unique, I mean, not culture, but what they have to offer the people. And I'd like to, to move on to a, a discussion in which, if you recall, many of our members here, is that I have this Policy Interns Institute that, in which interns were, are actually in my office and have provided and done research as well. And interestingly is that when they made a presentation to our colleagues and some members of the community and testified here in the legislature, they went on and spoke in K-57. They're also on the legislature channel, and some of the questions that were, that were asked, that they've done some research, that they've actually responded to, to our members, and I'd like to share some of those. I wanted to, to give it to Senator Yamashita, where, two of her questions, how do the residents of CNMI feel about Guam's efforts in bringing in China and Russia, and is there a way for Guam and CNMI to both benefit from this waiver, visa waiver program? And interestingly, of course, the results is that there was a, one, one of the, Shirok, as a matter of fact, suggested a clever and effective way for tourists to visit both Guam and CNMI, essentially benefiting both areas. And unlike the CNMI, Guam is devoid of casinos, and the absence of gambling activities such as those that occur in casinos places Guam in a unique position to market our island as a wholesome family destination to Chinese and Russian tourists who would come to, to visit. So that was just one way in which to, to highlight some of the things that's offered there that we don't offer here. And then the other is a combined package of, you know, coming to CNMI and coming and extending also to Guam. And, and the other is in terms of how the residents feel about this, and this is really very interesting, although I know it actually came from the paper, where they're saying that an unnamed resident said that Guam already has the military to lean on, and here in Saipan, they, you know, would really need something like this to continue, of course, in their island, and, and feel that, you know, CNMI is economically disadvantaged already. So, you know, one, one person, of course, is sensing that. The other is the concern that the representative for Homeland Security was concerned about is the Russian or Chinese actually overstaying their visa, and several suggestions, and this is very interesting, is that some of the possibilities that could actually happen is requiring that these tourists then to Guam and CNMI post a monetary bond as a condition for travel, and are interesting. The other is a liability insurance for tour operators, travel entities, and hotelers, that, you know, you can, you can find these companies then if, you know, an individual or more under their jurisdiction overstays their visit, and that, you know, such companies would then make it a priority to make sure that they do not stay beyond their time. And, and they also provided that real-time traveler database, which, you know, of course, through the immigration office, that they're able to, they, they do have their database, but also having the hotels update their status for all the, their tourists. And lastly, is a systems of fines and fees by instituting this, you know, that, to make sure that, you know, they're not, that these illegal immigrants would not be permitted to, to find work and to, to continue to live here. And, and these are by several students, an intern by Bing Wang, and the other one is Steve Shin, who responded to our colleagues here, and I'm hoping that one of our other members here would also be able to provide testimony again as well, in which another intern has provided information. So what, what I, in, in closing really is that in, in the wake of this extreme financial uncertainty, I think that I think that this is something in which I think both of us in a united voice need to pursue. This resolution, you know, does just that to make sure then that, basically, we're saying that we are providing an alternative, a solution, to be able to help ourselves and not have to go and continuously ask for federal, you know, handouts. And as you know, Mr. Speaker, that you have indicated that and taken a very strong position about where we are economically, nationally and internationally. And we depend, yes, on what, 40% of our revenues from the federal government. And should the committee, this powerful committee in 12th, should not reach a consensus, then automatically we stand to be cut, our federal programs stand to be cut by 20%. And that includes not just the programs itself that we provide, services that we provide, but it would actually include individuals who are federally funded, whose positions are federally funded. Through this visa waiver, we would be helping ourselves to be able then to provide the resources that our government would be able to realize from these tourists who are not here for three days, but could actually, the average in CNMI has been anywhere between six to 15 days. And many times, Mr. Tourism would say, if we can just ask or have them extend one more day, imagine how much money we'd be able to, we'll be able to realize. But here we have tourists who would be, who do stay from six to 15 days. And I just hope that, and I'm thinking that everyone really agrees in here and that this resolution will be passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Blosz, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, Mr. Speaker, like the previous speaker before me, the good lady from Malolo. And if you indulge me, please. I think it was very important that, as she had spoken, there was interns that, you know, that worked in her office over the summer. And one of the projects that she has stated was to look into and provide research and a presentation to members of this body and to the community on the whole issue of China, Russia visa waiver. I had the opportunity of being able to attend this briefing. And in the briefing, did pose a question to the panel. I think that it's, if, provide to me the privilege of being able to read a prepared response by one of the interns, who was, I guess, tasked by their leader, to be able to take the question and do the proper research and get back to the senator providing the question. And so if you, if you please provide, Madam Speaker, I'd like to read the response for the record provided by this member. And it says, Dear Senator Blosz Hafaday, you recently attended a briefing relative to the inclusion of China and Russia in the Guam CNMI visa waiver program. Provided herewith is a response to your question, why are we looking at China and Russia? Based on my research, there are several sound reasons, there are several sound reasons appear why the governments of Guam and the CNMI are focusing on China and Russia to be added to the Guam CNMI visa waiver program. Proximity: By plane, China is five hours away and Russia is eight hours away. This makes Guam a far shorter flight when compared to a flight to California, which would take 11 hours. Climate: With an average water temperature of 86 degrees Fahrenheit, beautiful beaches and pristine waters, Guam would be highly attractive to this, a highly attractive destination for people who live near the frigid waters of Vladivostok, whose average temperature, water temperature is a cool 40.6 degrees Fahrenheit. Proven market: Thirdly, it is a proven market. By extending a visa waiver to other countries would be risky. We would be unsure if people would be willing to come to Guam or even if they heard of Guam. The Chinese and Russians, however, have long visited the CNMI and would most likely be willing to come to Guam to further enhance their experience in the Micronesian Islands. In a 2008 hearing before the House Subcommittee on Insular Affairs, Oceans and Wildlife, Vice Speaker BJ Cruz stated the Chinese and Russian tourists could potentially generate $212.2 million in combined payroll, hotel lodging and grocery seat taxes by 2018. Precedent and political momentum: Fourthly and most importantly, the visa waiver has been extended to the CNMI and so we see that a precedent has already been set. It would only be proper if we on the island of Guam are extended the same privileges that are extended to our brothers and sisters on Saipan. On behalf of the interns at the Public Policy Institute at Speaker Wampat's office, I would like to thank you for recognizing us in the special session held on Tuesday, the 2nd of August, 2011. My name is Joseph Buddy and I'm an intern, and I am an intern from the Public Policy Institute for Speaker Wampat. Sinceramente, Joseph Buddy. And I think, Madam Speaker, again, that was very important. Because this is a process and this was not only from the, what was enlightening was the institute was made up of high school students and in some cases, college-bound students, college students, who took the time to be able to research. And I think there was a, it was very, the research they did was very intense. And exposed themselves to the questions, not only from this body, but also from the, from the members of the public, not only in a public hearing sitting, but also on radio. So it was tested. And in their honor, and it's for the work that they've done, I felt that it was proper and appropriate that I read the letter for the record. That said, Madam Speaker, I am in support of the resolution. And I feel that as we continue and as we want to continue to expand and grow in our economy and diversify those areas of our economy, one of those areas that we look into is expanding the type of tours or the tourists that come in here from the different nations. With regards to the safety and security concerns about China and Russia, it's proven in as far as the parole authority already granted to the CNMI, you know, over the past few years, there has been no reported incidents that would cause them to rethink this whole process. You know, very recently, in articles, not only on CNN, but Fox News, but other nationalized news services, there was a whole report with regards to Chinese military and its upgrade. But I think of the same process, they also talk about how Chinese, the Chinese government as well as the Russian government were in, they were in economic partnership, if you will. For God's sake, China owns part of our debt. You don't, you know, as an enemy, you're not going to go after somebody who owns your debt. You're going to hope that that individual whom you own the debt to is prosperous so that you get a return on your investment. So that, that works towards us as well. So I think that it's very appropriate with regards to our continuous push so that we can hopefully encourage the Department of Homeland Security in rethinking or in speeding up their thought process and providing us the ability to be able to have a visa waiver program for Chinese and Russian visitors. That said, Madam Speaker, there is one amendment I'd like to make to the resolution. And actually, it's going to be found on page two, on line 26. Actually, the whereas on, that incorporates line 26 is, whereas Guam's inclusion in the China-Russia visa waiver program will provide Guam with the economic stability required for growth and progress, I'd like to add on line 26, after the word "will", add the words "help to". So it will say, the program will help to provide. Basically, when you read that without the words "help to", it almost sounds like we were putting all of our eggs in one basket. And that as, if we don't get this, we're not going to have the requirement for, or the economic stability required for growth. So, but this will help to, along with the other things that we continue to do and we're trying to do, to build in our, to build in our ability to grow and to progress. So it's to include the words "help to" after "will" on line 26.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And with that, I encourage and please ask my colleagues also to support the resolution. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, are there any other speakers? Mr. Vice Speaker, do you have anything? You've taken the lead here, so.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have been pushing this for several years, so, and I think everybody has covered all the points. I'm glad that the retiring speaker did mention that the young man that did the research noted that, in my testimony before the Congress, that I gave some statistics about how much money this was going to bring to Guam. We currently, with our visitors from Japan, get about $600 in their purchasing power here when they get here, since most of them buy their packets in Japan. But the Chinese and the Russian visitors will be bringing in and spending on Guam in excess of $4,000 apiece during their visits. That's going to be a great shot in the arm for our business privileged tax and for the additional inclusion of, I mean, expansion of the tourism industry. So the stats are all there. I still don't understand who it is in Washington that's holding it up, but that doesn't mean that I'm not in support of this. I really want to push this through. And there's only one amendment that I'd like to ask and maybe this can be worked out between the sponsor and the legal counsel. And I just have problems with the word vehement in the title. And if we can just amend that, I'd be very happy. Thank you. And I fully support it.
What page is that on?
In the title.
On the title? The word vehement, to change it to something other than vehement. So legal counsel then will, no objections, so ordered. So Senator Munia Barnes, to close, oh, you want to speak? Okay, Speaker Ben, then, on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in full support of this effort as well as all the other efforts that have occurred in the past and continue to occur today, to try and get some movement on this issue in Washington. All of us have put our own efforts into finding any avenue available to us to push this issue and place it before the authorities that are empowered to make the decision, that would allow us to implement a program that will bring Russian and Chinese tourists to Guam under a less cumbersome and less arduous process. And we want to do that in order to ensure that we continue to develop our markets and diversify our markets. It's no secret that this is one of the initiatives that the governor also supports and is actually banking on to support any additional government operations and growth. And that really, without this, it is hard for us to support any other increases in the cost of our government and in any additional borrowing. I mean, this, to bank on this, that we can, continues to elude us to obligate ourselves to debt service payments over the next 30 years, I think is, you know, at this time, not prudent. But it doesn't stop this body from collectively working together with, in our membership, as well as with the governor, to try and push this initiative. Because the success of this initiative just means that we're able to provide additional resources and economic growth that will benefit the members of our community. And so in that respect, I certainly stand wholeheartedly in support of this effort. I do want to make one statement for the record and try to work on some technical changes that may need to be made to the bill to just be very sure. We do know that the reference has always been a China-Russia visa waiver program. But the statutes, I don't believe, have that reference in the statute. They refer to the Marianas, quoted in the first page of the bill, Public Law 110-29. The reference in statute is the Marianas Visa Waiver Program, which would allow a entry of a Japanese and, I mean, a Russian and a Chinese tourist into Guam and the Marianas without the requirement for a visa. And so I understand the expediency from our local perspective of referring to it as a China-Russia visa waiver program. I just want to be assured that when we pass it with that expediency, that it is identifiable and statutory correct so that the powers in Washington can refer to the appropriate requirements and law that would allow them to fully understand and not have any other misgivings about what are we talking about. And so in that respect, I'd like to just request and make a general motion that when we refer to the China-Russia visa waiver program, that we include additional language that is technically correct so that it is identifiable and easily ascertained in Washington of exactly what we're talking about, where they have the power in statutes to provide relief to our community. So just a general motion on that.
It's a very good suggestion, Mr. Speaker. I think it has something to do with parole authority.
That's correct.
And so if there's no objection, we'll authorize legal counsel to make the correction to also known as, or some kind of legally known as, the, something or other parole authority.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for, my colleagues, for indulging my suggestion and motion. It is really, I think that one of the best things about this is, in terms of understanding its impact to the community of Guam, is that statue, is the statistics that you pointed out, Mr. Vice Speaker, of what this means. In addition to ensuring that we have additional tourists, this is what you call low-impact, high-return tourism. And I think that one of the stresses that we are putting into our tourism infrastructure is our dependency on high-volume, high-impact tourism. That costs us more to service this high volume. Not because of high volume, but just the demand that this numbers put on our tourism infrastructure. You know, when you visit other tourism sites across the globe, most especially when those that are catering to cultural tourism and the history and the culture of the place, of which everybody seems to think is the diversification needed for our tourism base, when you do this kind of tourism, when you have high volume, you have high impact, high cost, high maintenance. And you actually begin to deteriorate your tourism infrastructure because of this. This type of tourists is, will have a low impact on our tourism infrastructure in terms of denigrating it and using it, but will have a high-volume return to our economy, given the nature of the tourists, the type of spending they occur, their length of stay in our community, and their interactions with our community. And so we've seen this occur in other jurisdictions. We've seen it with our closest example with our northern neighbors who have had, for many years, benefited as a diversified group of tourists that they attract, this low-impact, high-return tourists of the Chinese and the Russians. And as you mentioned, you know, it takes four to five Japanese tourists, maybe eight Japanese tourists, to have the same economic impact that a single Russian tourist or a single Chinese tourist may have on Guam. And that's just because of where we've evolved with regards to our attraction as a destination from our Japanese tourists. We've moved from, and some of this has been beyond our control. Some of this has been the control of foreign trade agreements between the U.S. and Japan, the status of duty-free and taxation, the bilateral tax treaties, how Japan has changed its internal taxing structure on luxury goods and so forth, that have deteriorated our base of Japanese tourists from the high- base of Japanese tourists from the high-sharp, high expenditure tourists, because of the change that has occurred in the Japanese economy, as well as the Japanese government taxing policies, that no longer tax high-end luxury goods as much as they used to for those that you can buy domestically in Japan. And so, these kind of changes that have occurred over the market in the years have not reflected the changes we've done in our own local marketing and local development of our tourist, tourist infrastructure towards Japanese, that has now resulted in us being a low-budget, low, I don't want to say the word, low-budget destination for, for, for the Japanese tourist. And so, this gives us an opportunity to diversify that base, upgrade our infrastructure to service the more demanding tourists, and maximize the infrastructure that we have in place without having to sink more money into it of preserving our tourism infrastructure, most especially when we take a look at the development of this historic and cultural attractions that we have for these tourists, who can now come through and not have placed that stress that, that high volume will place on our tourism infrastructures in, in our communities. So, I certainly, for all of these reasons and all the other reasons articulated by members of this body and members of our community that have continued their efforts to try and put this program in place, believe that this will help and foster and focus more attention on, in Washington that is currently being given and currently being able to be directed by those in Washington that are there representing us today. And so, we need to help them focus the attention. We need to give them the ammunition. We need to give them the direction, because sometimes the direction that they're interested in is not things that will make things better for us here, in that they have other concerns, and that, you know, they think this is local politics and we should all be the only ones here, and they're off to Iraq or Afghanistan, while we continue to try and put policies in place and focus the direction of Washington policies on those that are going to make a difference in our lives here. And so, I think this is a good move and, and certainly support it, and thank my colleagues also for their support.
Thank you, Senator Ben. Any other senator wish to be heard on the resolution? Do you wish to close or send it down?
Mr. Speaker, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you in your efforts too, as, as my vice chair, but also as oversight chair in the past of, of your efforts and continuing to move this off, over. And as we work together as an island community to get this going for Guam, I think it's important that, that, that this program be authorized for, for Guam, and that in this efforts, that Guam will look into economic prosperity. Mr. Speaker, by me, I know that, I forgot to put some of the sponsors who said that supported the efforts of this resolution, and if I could at this time, I'd like to put Speaker Wampat, yourself, Mr. Speaker, but also my brother Frank Blosz and Speaker Ben Panglinen as, as sponsors in that order. And if, and if anyone else would like to jo, join, we'd have it in, in alphabetical order after that, if, if that.
Any objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I thank you again for giving me this opportunity, and I'll move it to the, I mean, for the voting.
Any objection moving to the voting file? Hearing none, the resolution is moved to the voting file. The next bill to, is Senator Barnes, no, Senator Mabini on Bill 94.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 94 is an act to, an act to require the Department of Education to administer a career interest inventory pilot program to middle and high school students. And this was, actually, a public hearing was actually heard in March 17. We've, since then, we've received quite a number of feedback from our community, including Department of Education, Guam Community College, and some, and counselors who, who would be directly affected by this type of legislation. Excuse me. I'd like to, I'd like to make, sorry, thank you, Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to move it to the third reading file.
The third reading, and you're going to speak on it?
Yes.
Okay, so you may proceed.
Thank you. Okay, so going back, again, this, this bill was actually introduced because of concerns that I have, as well as my colleagues. Thank you again to my co-sponsors, to Senator Wampat, Senator Yamashita, for supporting this, this bill. Now, the intent of this bill, what originally was to basically address the concerns that we have regarding our students who need to transition, who are challenged with the transition to life after high school. And we also want to try to build better collaboration between the schools, the colleges, and our labor force, so that there is that successful, successful transition. Without that transition or success, students tend to either drop out, or they end up having, having to meet the world outside of high school with no real clear direction. And so, this bill helps begin addressing this. Now, let me, let me share that some of the testimonies that we receive, like from the Department of Education, there's some of the concerns have already been addressed by the substituted bill, which I believe I'm supposed to move to accept the bill as substituted?
Already?
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's accepted, yeah.
It's already addressed in this bill regarding the planning, the curricular issues, funding issues, and so forth. Now, one of the things that, that I will, I will mention later on is regarding an amendment regarding the terminology, career interest inventory, so it's a little bit of a technical change, but I'll refer to that in a moment. I think what, what I would like our colleagues, my colleagues to recognize again is that our school system at the moment does not have a really clear system where students can transition, can easily begin seeing where their careers, or what possible careers are out there for them. We know we have existing programs in place, like academies, we, and, and for those of us who are not quite familiar what academies are, what I'm talking about are particular programs that are specific to certain careers, like nursing, or, nursing, or marketing, or whatnot. What this address goes back, what this addresses, addresses are students going further back, in this case, middle students. I think that some of the challenges that our counselors are finding is that by the time students reach high school, there's still that sense of confusion as to what and where they're supposed to go, to go. This particular bill will require students, starting from middle school, to begin identifying what are their career options, and then when they go into high school, they, they should be able to continue their path. And as the bill stipulates, I believe it's on page four, basically, middle school students upon enrollment in their seventh and or eighth grade, will, as well as public high schools upon entry into ninth and 10th grade, will begin having some, the exposure needed to start identifying the kind of career options. Now, let me go back, if you don't mind, to an amendment that I'd like to actually propose on this bill, and this is because of strong response, a strong response that I got from the career counselors. The, the title of the bill talks about career interest inventories, and as they had explained, it's almost like talking about the tool within a toolbox, and what we should be talking about is a toolbox, and, and they're right. So, I propose to make an amendment to, instead of honing in on the tool called a career interest inventory, what they are suggesting is that we, as a, as a body, consider this, consider the, a career information delivery system, or what they call, what the industry calls SIDS. And within that SIDS would be like career interest inventories and a system. What they're concerned about is that if we just tell them that this is a tool that the schools, middle school and high schools are supposed to use, it doesn't address the system that's actually what's needed in place. So, at this point, what I'd like to do is submit an amendment that, on the document, to change career interest inventory to career inform, information delivery system.
So, you're, you want to replace career interest inventory?
Yes, with career information delivery system. And that would encompass career interest inventories, and we don't necessarily focus in on one particular product, we're talking about an actual system.
And, and the, a general then amendment, so it's not just on the title?
That's right.
Replace where it talks about career interest inventory, to replace it with career information delivery system?
That's correct. And, and in my assessment, it looks like title page, page three, four, five, and six. And also, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, one, one moment.
Sure.
So, it's everywhere, because like, for example, you're saying in page three, line 26?
Page three, we have it on line, that's right, line 26. On page four, we have it on line 20, excuse me, line seven?
Line seven.
Six and seven.
Seven.
Yes.
Six and seven.
We also have it on line 24 and 26.
On the same page, 24?
That's correct, same page. On page five, line one.
Okay, I, I guess my concern here is I want to make sure that when you, when you read with this change, that you're able to read, when you read it, that it does flow?
Yes.
And it does describe, are you going to put a, a definition or anything like that? Or?
No, but I can certainly insert that in as a definition. Right now, the, just as much as we didn't have a, a definition of a career interest inventory, the career interest, the delivery system is basically just a terminology to, that encompasses a system to help the kids figure out what their careers are.
Okay, so, so, yeah, all right, so, on, on the amendment, which is starting with the title and throughout the bill, that to replace career interest inventory with career information delivery system. On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Okay, Senator, you still have the floor?
Yes, and just one minor change as well on page, just to, to make sure that the, the flow of the, of the text is clear. On page three, line 21, just for clarification, so line 20 and to 21 should read, starting at the end of line 20, career interest inventories is a, in an insert, to be inserted, career interest inventories is a tool in a career interest, excuse me, career information delivery system to empower students, et cetera.
So, on page three, starting on line 20, it should read career interest inventory?
Yes, career interest inventories.
Okay, oh, I, yes.
Yes.
Is a tool in a career?
Information.
Information.
Delivery system.
Delivery system.
To, and continues on.
To empower students to be more self-driven.
Yes.
On that amendment, have any objections? No objections? Yeah, please make sure we get that in writing, so that the clerks will be able to follow through. So, on that amendment, when, which is on page three, then, line 21, without any objections, so ordered. What about 24?
No, that's.
That stays just as it is, then?
Yes.
And page four, title five, page, I'm sorry, line five, that changes to that again, the same as the front?
I'm sorry, what line, what page?
Page four, line five.
Yes, that's correct, thank you. That should read career information delivery system.
Please, you may continue, is anything else?
Yes, and finally, you know, the goal, Madam Speaker and colleagues, is that at the end of the day, we should be seeing graduates who are all declared majors, because they know where they're going, and that, and in this case, colleges and, and our industry will be able to receive them and begin also making plans, as opposed to having graduates still floundering and not sure where they're, where they should be going. So, again, our goal is through this type of measure, through a pilot program, that we should be able to begin helping our students find a successful transition after high school. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, just on the motion then to send Bill Number 94-31 as substituted. Senator Panglinen, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I just rise with the changes that were just made. Now, I'm kind of confused, because apparently, when the bill was written, what was in the bill was the tool, I guess according to the explanation. So, what is described in the bill is the tool. Now that we're making the change, we're now saying the toolbox. So, but we didn't change anything at all, except we're now calling the tool, the toolbox. So, are we now saying that the entire system is just this, or is there other things in the system that is more than the tool? You know what I mean? So, I, and it only just struck me in terms of just the, the example being used. So, it's kind of like the if-ami-ago-ta, you know, when we, the program or the system, wraparound is the program, if-ami-ago-ta, I mean, if-ami-ago-ta is the program, wraparound is the system, but wraparound is not if-ami-ago-ta. But here, we're now saying that the tool and the toolbox are the same thing, and there's nothing else in the toolbox, because the tool is the toolbox. I, I don't know, I'm just kind of confused. I just want to make sure that we're not closing the door to other things that are part of this career information development system, or whatever that is, that there's not other things that can fit under this, you know, and, and it's not just now just confined to this, that the system is more than what is in here, but what is in here, in the bill is what we're calling the, the system. And it's, is it the entire system now, or are there other things that can be part of the system? I'm just trying to get that absolutely clear in my mind, you know, that we're not just creating something by just calling it something, that there are other factors that need to be part of this career system, and it's not just the, the career list, or survey, or, or process of identifying those paths. So, that, that's my only concern on, on this, on what has just transpired, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. On the motion, are there any other speakers to close? Senator Mabini?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my colleague from Veragada. Is that right? Just in reference to the, to the, to the question that was just raised, that the, yes, this becomes the tool in itself, because in, in and by itself, if, if we, if I had left this, and this was the concern that the counselors made, if, if we had left it as that, it would have been just a standalone tool that doesn't invite collaborative effort in making this tool that doesn't invite collaborative effort in making this career, you know, to make this career identification, or excuse me, career interest information delivery system. So this, by changing, by having this as the toolbox, it actually brings in more buy-in with all the people, or should have more buy-in with all people who would be involved in making sure that we have a system in place to help these kids develop and identify their careers. And I look forward to Bill 94 coming eventually into law so that we can continue assisting our students to be successful after high school. Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the motion then to send Bill 94-31 to the third reading file, without any objections, Substitute Bill Number 107, COR, recognized, Senator Munia Barnes.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move Bill Number 107-31, COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform to the third reading, and if I can speak to it, speak on it, please?
Yes, you may, please proceed.
Please proceed, thank you. Madam Speaker, Bill Number 107 as substituted, this is an act that will add new sections 122, 12.1, 122, 12.2, and sections 122, 122, 12.3, to chapter 12 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated. And Madam Speaker, this is relative to the public disclosure of a physician's professional profile, which may be cited as the Patient Protection Through Information Act. The Patient Protection Through Information Act, Madam Speaker, will require that the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to publicly disclose to individual citizens and via the Internet what is commonly referred to as a physician's professional profile. And this physician profile, physician profile laws have been authorized in California, Washington State, New York, Rhode Island, and Oregon. And Bill 107 is modeled after the state of California, statute, and has been tested by courts. We also worked with both the Guam Medical Association and the Guam Medical Society to address their concerns and garner their support. The measure as substituted, Madam Speaker, will require the public disclosure of the temporary restraining orders issued, interim suspensions, orders issued, revocations, suspensions, privations, or limitations on practice ordered by the board, including those made part of a probationary order or stipulated agreement. This would also include the public letters of reprimands issued and infractions, citations or fines imposed, civil judgments in any amount for damages, for death, or personal injury caused by the physician, insurgence, negligence, error, or omission in practice, or by his or her rendering of unauthorized professional services, and all settlements within the last three years, if there are two or more. And this would also include any summaries of hospital disciplinary actions that result in the termination or revocation of a licensees, staff privileges for medical disciplinary cause or reason, unless a court finds in a final judgment that peer review resulting in the disciplinary action was conducted in bad faith. Madam Speaker, this bill really says that no patient should avoid necessary medical care because they are too afraid to receive it. Our, this measure operates on the premise that truly knowing your physicians places, truly knowing your physician, your doctor, places patients in charge of patient care. And I just want to say that as we look at our medical community today, and we look at wanting to make sure that our physicians in our community provide the best medical care for their patients, like I said earlier, no patient should be afraid to get care. They should know what their doctor has gone through. And Madam Speaker, I know that this version was the substituted version, and if I'm not mistaken, it was the actual implementation to, instead of three, for disciplinary actions, it was moved down to two. So in, I ask my colleagues that they help me support this patient protection through information acts, because I truly believe that it empowers the patients to be in control of how they want their care, and know where their doctor's profile is, and know that they should feel safe when they're going to receive medical care from their physician. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to briefly speak on this. I know it's almost 5:00, and we have a couple of other public hearings, but I really hope that my colleagues help me support this effort and support this Bill 107-31. Thank you, Sido Smasi. Madam Speaker, if I may, I know it's 5:00, and we do have a public hearing real soon, so I'm going to ask that, I know I've done opening testimony on this, but if we can just move to recess until tomorrow morning at nine?
Thank you very much, Senator. We will be in recess until 9:00 tomorrow morning.